Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Welcome to the extraordinary meeting of Hanforth Town Council Planning Committee. We didn't deal with issues about fire and the lights, but I think you all know exactly how to exit from here through that door, that door over there or behind us. If there is a fire alarm, it's not a test. Okay, so welcome to councillors Sullivan and Millwall to the planning committee. And we'll get on with the agenda, item 21231, which is to receive apologies.
Apologies received from councilor Tolba and the council of granted dispensation.
Okay, do we need to vote on that again?
No.
Until 21232, to note declarations of interest and requests for dispensation to do to go, or discuss a vote on a matter of which a member or co-opted member has a disposable pecuniary or non-pecuniary interest. That's applied to any company councillor's. Okay, lovely. Item 21233, which is the open forum. Comments and questions concerning items on this agenda may be put to the council by the public during this period, matter of which in the chairman's view will require debate and or a discussion, will be referred to the next committee council meeting as appropriate. The public forum restricts to 15 minutes unless the chairman allows otherwise. Do you have any members of the assembly asked?
My name's Paul Dixon, ten and we drive Hanforth, residents of Hanforth for 43 years. I've come this evening because of something that happened at last month's planning meeting. And I did send all the members of the committee...
I am a little bit...
Can I come nearer?
Could you possibly just speak up a bit?
Yeah, I did send all the members of the committee, or were members of the committee at the last meeting, an email on the 15th of July to tell them what had happened and explain what had happened at the meeting. Now, I don't know if anybody wants to intervene here and take over from me, but briefly what happened was, you should have had an email.
I don't remember receiving an email.
Well, you certainly sent one. Did anybody else receive an email?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, my apologies. I don't know whether it's...
It was rather disappointing that I didn't get any reply. Yes, certainly. So, at the last month's meeting, one of the councillors made quite a few comments about a conversation with me. And unfortunately, what the councillor said was not only wrong, but completely the opposite. And I don't know if they want to make any comment now, but the vote was quite close, actually. I think one councillor abstained, one voted against and two voted for. Now, I think that if the comments that had been made, which were incorrect, hadn't been made, there's a possibility that vote might be different.
Can I just say here, I would count on that this is the very first time this has been done before.
Yes.
But times that are made about the gap...
There's no gap.
But as I explained to you, you can always...
No, 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 you're voting, you're voting on the planning application. The planning application, there's no gap. There's no plans to have a gap.
I misunderstood.
Exactly, exactly.
But my point was that we don't know how many houses on this...
I do. Well, I've been round the estate, there's 110 similar properties on the cleansing estate, 110. And I feel a bit of responsibility tonight. I mean, obviously, I'm here for my house, but this can happen another 110 times. And, you know...
And how many have...
No, these are ones that potentially could.
Yeah, and how many have, because you can't tell from the outside. The one that I've been in one where they have...
Yeah, but regardless, well, they might have a garage door on the front, but there's no gaps. If you're not saying there should be a gap... Yes, and if there's a gap, if there's a gap, it's fine. But you're voting for an application where there's no gap.
And something that could be...
No, the plan says no gap. Any other comments, please?
Well, you know, honestly, there is nothing we can do to go back into that.
Well, there's no case officer been allocated yet.
Right.
And so until there is, there's a small window of opportunity. If I can give to them something, I know the vote can't be rerun, but if I can give them something to say, but the reason it was this is because things were said that aren't correct.
Okay, well, it's not time to announce the agenda, so I suppose you, not necessarily, what we really have to do, because it's the next...
Well, you and I have had a sit-down discussion as well, haven't we?
We have.
In the office. I said, to be perfectly fair, the parish council have now submitted their objection. Once they made that decision, that is the Cheshire East Council.
It is. Cheshire East Council at the moment have got no objection to this. No objection. That's scandalous. You've got an opportunity to do something before it's a case officer.
But it's cases that will ultimately decide...
Correct, but at the moment, all they're going to see is Hanforth Parish Council, no...
They'll also see all your representations as well.
Well, they've seen my objection.
Yeah.
My objection, that seemed to get ignored at last month's meeting. Yes, you knew there was two objections.
But now you've stated it, and I abstained from it, only because I didn't understand where the gap was going to be.
There isn't a gap.
Yeah, but because I...
You would have voted against, wouldn't you?
It's not that I don't know.
Well, if you had have voted against, then it wouldn't have got through.
I mean, I have faith in my colleague councillor, and I've been on the council for some very long time, and she's not the type of person that can tackle cases.
No, I'm not saying she did it on purpose. I did put that in the email. I think it's a genuine mistake.
But I didn't understand who that was, to be honest. And I didn't tell my colleagues.
I know you've got seen it.
But I'm sorry, I didn't fully understand, because we say about the funds. Now, when I saw the funds, I didn't see a gap.
There isn't one.
Yeah, you're saying that now, but I was totally, totally right. It wasn't that good, but... I mean, and you could object on the grounds that if there isn't a gap, you don't want to do it.
Who is saying there's no gap? Who's saying there's a gap? Please tell me who is saying there's a gap.
Well, from the conversation we had a couple of months ago, that's the impression I got from you and...
That's incorrect, that's incorrect.
But, and the one that I've seen that has been done has a gap, so I know it can be done. No further questions?
Yes.
Given that if a person exits the door to you...
Yes.
There's something like that.
Yes.
Neither of you said your wall, yes?
No.
Oh, yes?
No.
You can't understand all the objections.
No, I was speaking to people in, who've worked in this industry all their life. They say I've got very, very little chance of stopping them. This is important.
I mean, I...
Every little story is important to me. That's why I'm here, begging you to do something.
Have you objected on the basis of that?
Yes. No, it's not got to the party wall yet. Has to be agreed first.
If you're not agreeing it...
Yes. Yes.
If you're not agreeing it...
No, it's not gone through the planning, it's not either case officer yet.
You need to put all your objections in now.
I will, I will, I have.
Not wait until the planning gets done, you know, so that's not...
I have put an objection in.
I can't honestly see, I'll have to have a discussion with the clerk afterwards, but I can't see how we can review it. But I'm prepared to talk to the clerk afterwards and see if there's...
I would ask if you put something in the minutes.
Sorry?
I would ask that you include something in the minutes.
Having said that, the planning department doesn't review our minutes.
I need something to show the case officer.
Well, can we do that, put them in the minutes?
Effectively bullying this council into changing their decision that they've made previously.
I'm bullying.
Yeah, sorry, that's how it comes across. They've made a decision, you had the opportunity to come to that meeting.
I did.
And you didn't come.
I didn't.
And you could have stated it at that moment.
I could have done.
Yeah.
I could, yes.
Paul, I'm quite now, just... Well, this is true, so we... No, that's true, not the agenda.
Well, I did make representations prior to the meeting that it could be brought up.
If it helps, I would be happy to write something that you can show the planning officer, saying that I stay, I'm...
Please, I'd be very happy with that.
My understanding of that, but also...
Yes.
That if it's proven, I mean, I still think we should be allowed to do it if there's a gap.
If there's a gap, we wouldn't touch it out.
And that's what I'd be saying, because I will, I will still support their application, because we don't know, every house, every one of those 110 houses might...
Julie, if this hasn't got a gap, will you object to it?
Okay, well, we can prove one way or the other.
Well, you can vote on the plan, and the plan has got no gap.
But if my comments influence Cynthia's decision to abstain, then I'm quite happy to write something for.
Please.
I do think that they should be able to do it.
If there's a gap.
If not, yeah.
And if there's no gap, they shouldn't.
I don't...
Yes, no gap, they shouldn't.
Okay. But if there's no gap, you'd be able to do it.
So you're voting, so you voted on the plan?
All right, I'm pleased. Sorry. If there's no gap, you can refuse the permission. Yeah. Then use your wall. Yeah. Right, okay. I think we need to have a further look at this and talk to the clerk.
That probably solves a lot of problems.
I was speaking to the clerk, and we will sort...
Thank you very much. I'm very grateful.
Okay. Any more comments from the floor? Yes?
The air-to-water pump.
Yeah.
I can't see how Cheshire East are blocking it, as they've got a plant change emergency. This is something that would be fitting to replace gas boilers. And this is quite amazing, the noise level, we're out doing a bit of research on it, doesn't sound very loud, quite a low hum, and it's quite direct, so the key magnet where the district, in the back of the house, next door shouldn't hear it.
But they... Cheshire East have had departments on the ground that they needed further information on the noise level of the unit. Now, in the information pamphlet given out by Vigilantes, Vigilantes, is it? Bellies.
Bellies, yes.
It does say that the unit gives its sounds at about 59 decibels, which I thought was then quite loud, but my husband explained to me that the, it's not a linear curve and therefore it isn't that loud. And I would imagine somewhere, they're going to have to come up with some other documentation, because they must have these things installed somewhere. And the next door neighbour has objected on the grounds of the noise level, but literally a plan that could happen. Yeah.
She's stuck in the garden. Sorry. Yeah, she reckons one, she's stuck in the garden, she will be able to take it home. Now, I have to say, we've got one opposite person, and he's sitting in the garden here, and it's mmm all the time.
No, that's interesting, you actually have heard of it, yeah.
The problem with all of this is that we do have to change from gas to other forms of heating, because gas boilers are no longer being, will no longer be made. And therefore, some alternative has to come into play.
That's a good one.
Obviously, then, you know, it's got to be acceptable to all. I'm not sure that I would object to that sort of, I don't know, typical, but yeah, that, yes.
Yeah. Some of them, it's a playground about, it's five acres. Fifty-nine just might not seem very loud, but it's constant all the time, and it's a long distance, probably resonating at low frequency, I don't know how that works, but I would be concerned if someone's citing something next to an island, that pet would be constant. It's not going to...
And it's two of them, so very comfortable and... I don't know, they're coming in unison.
Am I wrong in saying that we had two on the last planning? No, only this one. Sorry, only this one, only this one, okay? Oh, that's...
You didn't even advance the...
Yeah. Well, yes.
They do make one that's designed for terrace houses, and it's 54 decibels. It could be, I mean, I've not heard of it, so I've got to bow to your lord, but it might not be the same one, of course, in this case, it was the objective, or whatever. What's the way you're going to have to go? That's the problem, isn't it? We've got no choice here, you know.
I mean, to be honest, Hanforth is the main one for it. And where, how, where, why, and where, where? But it's only speaking to one...
Are you aware, it's definitely what we're talking about?
Okay.
I think the environmental health letter from Cheshire East hasn't actually, I mean, it's recommended in refusal, hasn't it? Based upon the fact that there should be some additional information in the planning process, that it isn't there. Then they're not kind of objecting to that, the work on principle, obviously, for the reasons it's difficult.
Yeah.
But if the environmental health people spot a gap in the planning documentation, then my perspective would be, we should really go with it, and, for the reasons of incentive, if there's a gap in the planning application, it should be good.
Any other members of the public have anything to say? Okay, one more time to the public forum then, and move on to item 21234, which is to approve and sign the minutes of the planning and planning committee meeting on 13th of July 2021. It's three pages long, does anybody have any issues with any of the pages? No? Okay, may I have a proposal then to accept those minutes? Councillor Smith? Can I have a second then? Thank you, councillor Sampson. All in favour? Do you? Sorry, what's my place now? Item 21235, to consider planning application, 213695M, installation of an air 14 for 59 meters in row. We also have save on item 21237, so I think it's possible to put the suit together, this must be all of one item, if that's acceptable. So, comments, councillors, please.
The comment I have to make is the feet and pains are installed in these, so I don't know how many other properties on that site are having my feet in my hands, because they are not repairing gas boilers there. And, you know, it's, it's, it's not excruciating, it's just loud. I mean, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if they could maybe put it in a sample box?
Well, I think they're not pointing it to anything, isn't it, to put it in a box? And if that's my understanding, I'm not very scientific, but I think so.
Very good answer.
Isn't that something, the, the item has been picked up by the Department of Health people, the lack of this being looked at? That, that's exactly the kind of thing that they would be making recommendations, and that's probably why they should form part of the planning application.
I think those are, you and I, this is new, you know, the box, or the... How many are moving in, five or, five divisions or...
Yeah, that's a good answer too.
There's an opportunity to get some information as well.
Well, actually, I did speak to the technical department, and the representative was going to call back, but he hasn't as yet. I feel interested to see that call from him, talk to him, and see what he says. Any other comments from councillors? No?
Well, there was one additional point on, on this first point, the 59 meter break, there was a letter in there, I think it's on the point eight, for the other one, there was a point indicating about 50s.
About?
There was a letter indicating about proximity of 50s, of low moving pressure.
Right. I think, yes, one of them had a gap, gas plants didn't fit in the way. I'm assuming that the planning department will deal with all of that, and that's what some of the, they mentioned we have any power over, but yes, we've got to, in fact, have to say, yes, then, then we have to follow through. Okay, so can we take a vote then, on, can I have a proposal for this planning application?
I'm confused, I don't know which way, it's all of a sudden, I don't feel I've got information to...
Some information here.
I almost understand, I'm not saying that you shouldn't do it, I understand exactly how this is why it should be done. Perhaps could you defer it to that to more than this?
Yes, we can do, we can defer it. What's the data is at the, can't remember my name?
I don't know what the data is exactly, but, especially if you rule my, I would say I'd vote.
Okay, so if you want to defer it then, are we going to, we'll have to defer both items, item 21235 and 21237, we'll need to propose that for the rule. Can somebody please propose it? Yeah, thank you, councillor. And somebody, yes, councillor, back in. So that both items, 21235 and 21237, deferred for the waiting of further information. Have a vote on that? Thank you. Okay, right, so the next item is to consider the planning application, 21236, planning application, two was on 3559M, single store receding rear extension 22, which was happening in Hanforth. Councillors, do you have any comments to make on this?
We can do things.
Yes. And let me ask, now can I have a proposal then to accept that, please? Thank you, councillor Sampson, may I have a second? I want to, councillor Sullivan, but if you don't, please on that. In favour? Yeah, you know. Right. Item 21238, consider the planning application, 213555M, the redevelopment of 39 new apartments for older people, 60 years of age and or partner over 55 years of age, the guest apartment communal facilities access car parking, landscaping is a recent mission of 192218M, or sanctuary house on South Aitland Drive. Oh, yes, sorry, councillor Smith has left.
I'm sure I know what the problem is.
Okay. Comments, please? Questions?
I'm objecting to this, because of the serious policy issues that happened in the last group study, they may count in their application that the people that are going to be buying these apartments, are going to be healthy, they could be able to get up and down the stairs at the railway station, they may comment about was having an irregular service, and so they won't need cars. Now, I'm sorry, all the people I know are well into their 70s, and they're still driving, and they're still actively on the road safely, so we're just going to be looking at people who can't drive or don't drive, because that's discrimination. And I, I feel, I didn't know they had an open forum meeting, the numbers of the public. Did any of us know?
No.
But in, in June, we didn't hear about it.
We weren't informed, no, not at all.
And one of the talents of Punters, what was it? Punters Gate went through it, and she said, the comment made by Churchill were totally... Oh, not just on that sector, they complicated the truth, because when she made the notification about the car parking, they came up with this new proposal, that other people won't need car parking.
That's right. When, two years ago, when there was a briefing in Hanforth, I think, where, I changed with the representatives of the government, that, that vice, vice-councillor, and, again, somebody said, they, one point, so, yes, most of the people who were here, they don't drive anymore, they are, they're not driving, and that was from person A. Then one of the salespeople joined the group, and she was quite tolerant, I don't know if she is, I've got it in sense, she finds herself, I recognize her, but she was in sales and had everything on it, although it wasn't extremely... I told them about item and out and about all the time, and it's a really fine person who made that house, one side was saying, what we want here, the other one was saying, she wasn't on script, but it's the opposite. And the, the main thing, the reason is that it's doing, you know, by the Secretary of State, it's doing to a now, they've made no material changes, but we, I don't think we're here to overturn something from the Secretary of State. Just to address my information, I don't...
I need information that we can, as an example, the fact that there was a car park next to a car park, and that they've given the permission to use, propose?
Yeah, they're either talking about the Chesapeake, which is still not available because it's full, it's been mine, I've been there every day, people have, Jason's super, and, you don't know that's going to remain there in the future, and I know that , I know that, because it's a hotel, and the dish on site, yeah. Well, we never got, okay, so, yeah, so it's, as, as the sense of said, the buses, the other sides, the buses stop from Manchester, and it's, it's only the, we don't need cars. We know that, so people won't need cars.
Well, to be honest, I'm kind of split down the middle here, and obviously, we can't go against what the Secretary of State has said, and that should form the basis of our objection, but I have to say that we have there an absolutely appalling site, which looks absolutely dreadful. And somewhere along the line, it's got to be heads knocked together, and people get together and work something out, because at the end of the day, I don't think anybody here wants to see that site stay as it is. So we've got to, somebody somewhere has got to have some sense and say, look, you know, these car parking facilities are not right. I mean, you can come up with all sorts of things, can't be around cars and what have you, car sharing and, and all that kind of thing, but... But, um, at the end of the day, I think it's got to be compromise. We have to remember that for the company, the church, there must be a line which, you know, another apartment which supports their profit level, if you like. So we go, well, I know Cynthia, but that's how they would look at it. And, you know, they would say, well, if we go to below thirty nine apartments, we're not going to make enough money off this to be able to make it a viable proposition. What I don't want to see is that, I mean, to stay as it is in a dilapidated state, it's dangerous. And I'm sure kids get it now, even though it's better start. Um, and like see something done about the site in all honesty, um, in, in, in some way, shape or form. Because at some point, I think somebody's going to build on it, aren't they?
Well, what I would hope is if Churchill backed down, we could then make the new business property that they want to do. Maybe give some planes or all the housing or coming and build some social wealth.
Maybe, maybe. That's what we need is some sensible property, isn't it?
I think we all want some investment in that particular area. And I think the point about cars parking over, I mean, lately is an interesting one. My perspective on the, the kind of tenants experience is more, is more along the way from the business line. In that if, if the experience of the tenants living in, in the actual apartments is, is not adequate with what they've been, they've been charged, then, then they won't have plenty. So that, I, I obviously I ignore the church issue, because the person who should trust it can see it on time.
I don't think they've done anything.
No, not.
Their experience. Okay, but if the experience of a person living in the apartment is not sufficient to justify the price, then we won't report that price. So I would see that as a church.
They would expect, I think, church.
Yes, we hope to be better.
When, when they were asked about that contribution, so that's what we said. Um, they turned that it wasn't, um, financially viable, uh, because putting in, instead of putting in, and some one house after a step, they have had to lock the door in. It's great and washed away from the sector.
What?
They did bring those words, but that's what they said, they were going to have a different door and lock, and they're going to record it. That.
Well, I, I think with the talk to them, I don't think this council could overturn the Secretary of State. Would you, I think they would want to, no. So I think, um, can I have a proposal to object to this planning application, please? Councillor Samson, you may have a second, the Councillor Smith. All those in favour of, um, objecting and do some basis.
We'll send our original objection and use of the motion from the Secretary of State to answer.
Okay.
As a basis for the objection.
In favour? Yeah. Against?
I don't know, I don't know enough about the same decision.
So you have to say, yes, okay.
Actually, can you let, um, Sam say on your objection?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And the last item on the agenda, item twenty one, twenty three, nine, to consider planning application, twenty one, four, oh, four, nine, M, proposed grant for single storey extension to the rear of the property, fifty four Woodlands Road, Hanforth. Comments, councillors, please?
The law seems to be running the names of stores.
Okay. Fair enough.
There's only one.
Okay, can I have a proposal then to accept this? Thank you. Uh, can I have a, sorry. I have a second, please, thank you. Councillor. My apologies. Can we take a vote on that, please? All those in favour? Thank you, you know. Okay, so that's the last item on the agenda. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for attending. And, um, we will hopefully see you in a second.